Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Independent School District 624 regular board meeting to order. I'd like the Secretary to call the roll.
Newmaster?
Here.
Strife Oji?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcand?
Here.
Lloyd?
Daniels?
Here.
Ellison, oh, no, sorry.
All right, we can stand. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In front of us, we have an agenda that was sent out. Did everybody get a chance to look at it? Did I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Okay. Dr. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We have an agenda. Also with this, we have a consent agenda. The consent agenda, we use for items to continually come up each week so that we can, we have them in front of us. But one of the best parts on there is that we have a community who likes to support our school district. And so on that agenda, we want to say thank you to those who have made donations to our And also on there, you'll see field trips, minutes from the last time, those are on there. Could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Daniels?
Second.
Second is by Strife Oji. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We are now at the part of the meeting where we have public forum. This is our opportunity to hear from the public. There was one request submitted to speak. I want to remind you that during the public forum, you'll get three minutes. Within one minute, we will show you. If you have one minute left, the speaker will get that. And then with 30 seconds, we will show you the yellow card. And then finally, when your time is up, we'll hit the gavel and your time will be up. We want to remind you that school district, district policy and data privacy laws preclude personal and student matters or data from being discussed publicly. Item C1, Student Recognition. Dr. K.
All right, our student recognition video tonight on our students who represented the district in state level competitions in the Scholastic Arts Awards, Boys Alpine Ski, Girls Gymnastics, Wrestling, Boys Swim and Dive, and Knowledge Bowl. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is C2, Super Tenants Report.
All right, thank you. Lauren, you want to jump in with the student liaison report?
Yeah, so today, many students were working back to settle back into their classes after coming back from spring break. Some upcoming events include the Black Student Union is hosting a 3:33 basketball tournament on Saturday, March 18th, from 10:00 to 1:00 at the North Campus Fieldhouse. Tickets can also be purchased on Smart School K-12 to watch the game. The White Bear Lake Environmental Club is currently selling $5 tree saplings until March 22nd. Help them meet their goal of 440 saplings to offset 528 tons of carbon emissions. Saplings can be purchased on the website bit.ly/wblec2023, and the trees, and the pickup date is Saturday, April 22nd.
All right, thank you, Lauren. And I'll just roll right into my report. So before I begin my update, I'd like to say a quick welcome back from spring break. I hope everybody had a safe and fun week and that our students and families reflected on the spring break video focused on gratitude. I hope you found a few things to be grateful for during their time away from school and that all of us continue the practice throughout the rest of the school year. We are eager to welcome, okay, this one, I always feel old when I announce this one, and I think you all will too. We are eager to welcome a class of 2036 incoming kindergarteners. Yeah, so, so as students are officially enrolled, they receive a welcome packet from their school, complete with a "I am a Bear" t-shirt. Find enrollment paperwork and additional information at www.isd624.org/kindergarten. Our free indoor walking has been going well. For those of you who hadn't heard yet, please know that community members are welcome to join us and use the new Fieldhouse walking track, which is open for free, walking from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. every Monday through Thursday. This project, along with the many that have taken place throughout the district, was made possible by the community's support of the 2019 bond referendum. And I'll add one more thing before I move on. I stopped by there today, just before the board meeting, and watched the very first track practice, and we had about 200 boys and girls in the Fieldhouse for the first practice of the year. So it was pretty neat to see. So the support from the community is much appreciated. All right, last but not least, I offer a friendly reminder to secondary families that March 22nd is a two-hour late start for middle school, high school, and TEC students. And that's my report.
Thank you. All right, the next part of our agenda is discussions. Discussion item one, it's the first reading of school board policies 211, 212, 214, 215, 410, 721, and 802. We have a committee that continually reviews these policies and brings recommendations of changes that are needed. Normally, we do this all together. So right now, is there any discussion or questions about any of these? And if you do have a question, please let us know what page you're looking on so that we can look at it. Any questions about those policies? Any questions before I move on? All right, thank you. So next thing we will do is we're going to move to our operational items. First, we're going to look at operational item number one, action on the FY '24 through '26 Achievement Integration Plan. Is Mr. Shavers going to talk? Welcome.
Good evening, Acting Chair Arcand and Superintendent Kasmercheck and board members. Thank you so much. Today's the Achievement Integration Plan. Just to give you an update on that, I know we have gone through a number of revisions to this, just trying to make sure that we, we get the accurate information for our district. And I apologize for one of the goals on there. The percentages weren't to you until today. I just wanted to make sure they were accurate before I gave you false information. So that has been updated in the materials. The purpose of the Achievement and Integration Plan is for that, to provide a racial and economic integration within our communities, increase student academic, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on student diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in our schools. The goal is to increase economic and racial integration, reduce achievement disparities, and increase access to effective and diverse teachers. And the plan, this plan will go through the 2025-26 school year. With me coming in in December, I did enter into the last phase of this, but its review of the 2021 through '23 plan and goals was part of this plan development process, gathering feedback from APAC, Willow Lane, and other key stakeholders. I know with the, with this piece of that, drafting the '24-'26 plan and gathering feedback, I know with our APAC community that, or parent a group, that we did have a vote of non-concurrent. So with that, one of the promises I did make in one of the January meetings, I believe it was, was to make sure that we address those concerns within this plan, which we did with, with that as well. So you'll see that throughout. Goal number one, it was the graduation rate for White Bear Lake area schools, American Indian students will increase from 80% in 2019 to 96% in 2026, which goes along with our, all students will graduate from high school as part of our world's best workforce. The percentage of White Bear Lake High School Latinx and Black students who take 12 college credits will increase from 18% in 2022 to 35 in 2026. This is also an integration goal and falls with our world's best workforce, with all students are ready for college and career readiness. And the last goal, White Bear, White Bear Lake area schools will increase BIPOC staff from 4%, which was in 2022, to 7 in 2026, which is approximately 15 additional staff members at that point. Some of the strategies that we looked at throughout this was to make sure that the implementation of standards-based learning framework was being utilized, evidence-based, culturally responsive, and affirming instruction, deeper implementation of BAR, AVID, and MTSS to raise achievement for all students while closing the gap, professional development for leaders, educators, and staff, which is one of the things I wanted to take a little closer look with our educational equity specialists and really defining their role clearer than what it's currently been, so that they are supporting our building leadership in professional development with their staff members. To really enhance our parent and family engagement opportunities and participation opportunities throughout the district using our Equitably Family Engagement Framework, and also beginning and/or beginning to or start again to have affinity groups with our staff, BIPOC staff, but also taking it a step farther, inviting our community members to also, our BIPOC staff or BIPOC community to form that group after, an evening session afterwards, so that we can get feedback from our community as well. Goal number one, for Willow Lane, which is our racially identified school, the percent of Willow Lane third grade students who are proficient in the MCA reading assessment will increase from 43.5% to 68.1 in 2026, which is also a world's best workforce area goal, that all third grade students read at grade level. Goal number two for Willow is confidence and leadership skills will increase by 30% as reported by a pre and post-test survey. And this is also an integration goal, that all students are ready for college and career readiness. And then our last one was also a repeat of that other goal for increasing our BIPOC teachers from 4% to 7%. And the strategies for Willow includes literacy work in letters and standards-based framework, learning framework, making sure that it's evidence-based, culturally responsive, and affirming instructions taking place, professional development for leaders, educators, and staff, enhancing parent and family opportunities for equitable engagement, affinity groups for racially diverse staff, and enhancing, enhancement of the Freedom School summers programming, which we are utilizing our, some of our educational equity staff this year to make sure that we are really increasing that family engagement piece of it in the summer as well. And do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions for Mr. Shaver? Yes, ma'am. Strife Oji?
I have one question, and I don't know if you have answers to this, but we were looking, I think I heard at the board, board session, at integrating with schools within the district but also outside of the district. I think I heard Roseville.
Right. So in, in the plan, Roseville is one of the schools that you'll see in there. I also want to do something a little bit different, too, and collaborate with schools that may not be, that are also, when we're talking about Willow Lane racially isolated, I also want to partner with other schools within the metro area, even though they may also be racially isolated, which is currently not in our plan to do, but I really want to make sure that we are collaborating with a number of different schools, not just those that are not racially isolated. That's really going to grow, offer our students and prepare them for life outside of White Bear Lake as well.
Any questions?
It's not really a question. It's just a comment. I saw in the field trips that some of our students went to some historically Black colleges and universities. Would have been March 8th.
That's actually was a typo.
First through the 8th. What?
That was a typo. They're going in April.
Oh, they're going, so it wasn't March. So I just wondered if you had any feedback on how that was going, but I noticed about two dozen students were going to go on, on this field trip, or it's kind of an extended, yeah, week.
So I will.
I was really excited to see that. Pardon?
I will report back.
Oh, that's great. Yeah.
And which is also in the plan.
Yeah, I saw it in the plan.
So that, that we can actually help with our staff recruitment. Figured since we're going there to visit, we also, we might as well recruit staff while we're there. So.
Good idea.
Any other questions?
So mine's not so much a question, but it's just a recognition of the fact that our APAC committee is currently not a part of this agreement. They haven't signed on to it. It's been hard for you to have communication with them, I understand. And I know you haven't been here long and you're still building relationships, so I take that, you know, into account for this. But to me, that's a concern, and I know that there's nothing more than you can do than to reach out to them and try to get them to come to the table to have talks about what it is that they're feeling they're not getting currently. So that's just something that I'm taking into consideration as I make my decision tonight. It doesn't reflect anything against you or anybody else in the district. It's just, for me, it'll be hard to sign off on something that, there's a line for their signature and there's no signature there.
I know that, just to respond to that, I know that there has been, I have been reaching out, but I know I did speak to Danielle DeLong on Friday before spring break, and I did forward her the information that I shared with the Systems Accountability, so that she was able to see that and review that as well and provide any feedback. I know she was on vacation, too, but I wanted to make sure she had that. Since our APAC meeting was canceled on, in February, I wasn't able to share that information, so.
So I'm taking Danielle as a member?
Oh, Danielle is a member of APAC, yes.
Dr. Katie, did you want to add something?
No, I think you covered it well. We appreciate your, your comment, Angela, and we'll, we'll continue to reach out and, you know.
And our new American Indian Education Coordinator started last Monday, Vincent Patton. He's off and running, doing a great job. He's been in buildings today, visiting principals and students already, so really working on the goal already of increasing the graduation rate. I know he met with all the seniors today, so that was really great.
Yeah, I look forward to meeting him, so, and I thank you.
Ms. Strife Oji?
So if we get feedback from APAC or on some recommendations or things that, is the plan adjustable?
Well, I know what to do on the 15th. I tried to address the two concern areas of the non-concurrent piece in there, so that I can make sure that we're focusing on that and making sure we're addressing those concern areas that they had. So hopefully, that will be where they're looking as well.
Do they know that due date?
Generally, the plan is, we can revise the plan in the future, and then we just have to get approval again from the Department of Education. So, in a three-year period, that's a long time, and sometimes things shift. And so when we make changes, we work with the Department of Ed to make those modifications in the plan.
And if they have questions, they'll, they'll send it back to us for revision as well.
Perfect. Are they aware that the deadline is the 15th?
APAC, I did talk to Danielle on the 3rd, I believe it was.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one question. It's mostly curiosity out of that. When we're looking at the goal one for Willow Lane, and we're going from 43.5 to 68.1, I was just curious how we came to sit on 68. And then are we planning on making incremental steps towards that 68 over the next three years?
I think, yes, we are planning on making steps, but I know that was taken from the world's best workforce. That's one of the goals for there. So it's just making sure that we're following along and being consistent with that.
Thank you. Any, okay, Ms. Daniels, do you have a comment?
So the world best, best workforce, that's a state plan, so when we try to, we follow their guidelines, and when you say we kind of look for the state plan to sort of develop our percentages, so that's what you're talking about. So we look for them, and then we follow or try to reach the recommendations that they have, right?
Right. It's ones that we created, White Bear Lake created for the world's best workforce, so it's just using those percentages.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to the next part? Thank you. I believe the recommended action is to approve the FY '24-'26 Achievement and Integration Plan. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Strife Oji, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any further discussion? Ms., Dr. Newmaster?
Well, I know it's a, a serious document with a lot of goals, and I didn't feel I had a good enough handle reading it through twice on my screen, so I printed it off so that I could, you know, get the yellow marker out and make notes. And, I mean, I'm impressed with the goals and, and everything. I am concerned if everybody hasn't signed off. But I guess we're looking at something that has a really big scope and a really big mission. Is the goal one that the world's best workforce took from stats in the state? I'm just curious also, where did that number come from? It seems like a really big leap. It would be lovely.
Which number are we looking at?
Oh, the improvement at, at Willow. I look at that and I think, you know, you don't want to feel like a failure because you've only improved a whole lot. And I realize sometimes they used to say, everybody's going to be 100%, which is, you know, the unreachable goal of perfection that we reach for. So I just, I just was really curious, because that would be a heck of a leap.
I think we may, we may have to have Dr. Gillespie get back to you on that specific question about the world's best workforce goal. I'd be, I'd be guessing what, how we arrived at 68.1. But it was developed as part of the world, world's best workforce in consultation with the Systems Accountability Group. How they arrived at that specific number, I'd, I'd have to get back to on that.
I just wondered if that was, because I.
I mean, it could be, it could be based on a state average, or it could be based on a district average, or it could be, but I don't want to comment.
Yeah, I wondered if it was statewide, because I know often, our kids do well reading. Even our schools that are struggling do well. Just a question. But it's a huge document with, you know, mighty goals.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call the question. This will be a voice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, four to one. The next thing we have on is action on bids for security upgrade package number four at Onika Elementary, Otter Lake, and the district grounds and buildings. Oh, sorry, we got grants. I missed it. Thank you. Action on acceptance of the, is it the Glassroot Grants?
Yep.
Dr. K.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Arcand, Dr. Arcand, members of the board. So we have before us a list of Glassroot Grants this year. Really want to thank the Education Foundation for all the support. Many of you were at the foundation event just a few weeks ago. It's a big fundraiser for, for the foundation, and those funds, almost all of those funds come back to benefit our, our staff and our students. So, so it's, I'll just, I'll read the recommendation. I won't, I won't read through all the grants, but they, they're there for your review, and I'm sure you all did review those. But I will, I will just read what the recommendation is, and then you can take it from there. Scott. So, "The recommended action is to accept the following resolution for six Glassroot Grants from the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, as shown in the attached materials. Whereas the school board believes it necessary and appropriate to accept grants that are reflected upon the following pages, and whereas the grants are consistent with state laws, school board policy, and administrative practices, and whereas acceptance of these grants are consistent with the mission and educational programs of the White Bear Lake area schools, and therefore be it resolved that the school board authorizes the acceptance and use of the following grants as presented."
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the grants?
So moved.
Ms. Thompson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Strife Oji. Any discussion? Hearing none, I just want to say again, echo on behalf of the board, we want to thank everyone for their continued support of our students. The outpouring of financial support is always such a great gift that we have in this community to make sure that our students are learning and moving forward. So with that, there'll be, I believe, a roll call vote. So if you could call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now we're on the action for the bids. I was just getting ahead of myself.
Well, I was ready to adjust.
Yeah.
Good evening, Acting Chair Arcand, members of the board, Ms. Collier, Dr. Kasmercheck. Yes, tonight, we have a recommendation letter and a bid tab sheet for security upgrades at the buildings you just described. We work with True North Consulting, their security system upgrades, they're experts in the field of security, and so they've helped us set standards and design upgrades to all of our buildings for security. We're getting near the end of having everything upgraded, so this is, after this will just be one security package upgrade, and that'll be when Sunrise Park students and staff move into, into current South Campus, which has been completed, and then District Center moves over to, to the Sunrise Park Building. That'll be the last security installation. So the low bidder was LVC, a company we've worked with before, at $767,679. The only other bidder was significantly higher at 931,735. So our recommendation is that the board accept the overall bid for the district security upgrade package for Onika Elementary, Otter Lake Elementary, and the district grounds and maintenance building, as presented to LVC, in the amount of $767,679.
Do we have any questions before we call it? I just have one, because I always ask this. How did that bid come in compared to what we budgeted for?
You know, the budget for this was about 25% lower than what it came in at. Our earlier, our earlier winning bids on security package came in below budget, but the bidding environment has changed, and so fortunately. The environment for construction has changed quite a bit since we started, so things are coming a little higher. We're very fortunate that we bid most of our projects when the construction costs were a lot lower than they are right now.
All right, thank you. So, in front of us, we have an action to accept the bids for the Onika Otter Lake and the district grounds and maintenance building. Do we have a recommendation here? Okay, Strife Oji, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote, so I'll ask you to call the roll.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wall. Thank you. The last thing we have on our operational items is operational E4, and this is action on the school board policies 101, 101.1, 102, 103, 511, 532, 616, 713, and 809. And once again, we will do these as a package deal. Are there any questions before we get going? Did I get a motion to accept these changes, our updates of these policies? Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Newmaster, any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a voice vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Finally, what we have tonight, we on our board forum, this is an opportunity for us to talk about things that are coming up, or things that are happening, that we'd like to share. Anybody have anything? Yes, Ms. Thompson.
I just would mention that I ordered trees from the, and I'm very excited, because they come to your house and we'll also plant them for you. So, that is what I have requested, and I look forward to having more trees in my yard.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Dr. Newmaster.
I'll just report on sort of the other end of the spectrum of our school district. We had a senior advisory group meet, small, but it's looking, the group is looking forward to the move and planning, and we met and talked about where plans were and what's the next step, and we hope we get more seniors involved, and they seem to like the hybrid, because you can zoom in from anywhere. And, you know, I hope we can get more. We had input from a survey, and now people are thinking about looking at the new building and thinking about things like parking spaces and furniture and activities, is there going to be room for enough activities, sorts of things. So, I think they're excited from the newborns to the other end of the spectrum. So, it's fun to hear people, and those that had thought they'd come, that didn't, weren't able to, had a lot of people say, oh, if only I weren't out of town, or if I could do this or that. So, I think there's a lot of interest, and people are really impressed with what they've seen, because a couple people had gone to the last lap of the North Circle, and I think we've had a real good community effort in involving. There's a way to go yet, though. We're looking forward to the new Sunrise District Center with the senior adult program.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then, I'd just like to say that it's exciting. We've hit this time of year, and those of you that have had seniors know how fast the rest of the school year goes. Before we know it, they'll be walking across that stage and collecting their diplomas. And with that, I just, I'd have to give a shout out to our educators and our paraeducators and everyone involved. For 13 years, these students have come through our system, these graduating seniors, and our teachers and staff members have put their heart and soul in making sure these kids are learning and getting them ready to be career and college ready. And so, it's exciting as we get to that point, that we're going to send the next batch of bears out into the world to do something fabulous. And so, that's, hang on, it's going to, it's going to go quick, so thank you. And with that, I have reached the end, and so I'm going to move from adjournment. Can I have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we are closed. Thank you, have a great night.